Welcome, everyone, to the City of Middletown Planning Board meeting for the month of February. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to deviate just a little bit from the agenda this evening. So everyone knows that Mr. Jeff Schumard is retiring as of March the 1st from Clark Patterson Lee, who the city contracts with to have Mr. Schumard as our Planning Board engineer. So this evening, we'd just like to say, some people would like to speak, and I'll say goodbye to Mr. Schumard. And I know, we're going to let the audience go first before I let the board members go, and I think there's a couple of people here that would like to speak to Mr. Schumard. State your name, sir, for the record.
Do you say his?
No, not really, but he should.
My name is Larry Rizal, and some of you may know I used to hang around here for about 20 years. About 20 years ago, 20, it was over 20 years ago, because I'm retired a few years, Jeff walked up to me one night at this building, and he said, "Do you want to play golf?" And I said, "Sure." And we're still playing golf. Not as well, but... I could give a talk about traffic reports and technical things that happen at the Planning Board, but that's not why I'm here. This is very personal to me. First of all, I want to introduce, if you don't know, that's Jeff's wife, Barbara, came in with me, sitting over there. We've been friends for a long time. We're the second generation of friends. My wife's mother and Jeff's mother were in the Bridge Club together, the longest-running bridge club probably in history. And so friendship is very important to me, and Jeff has gone out of his way to be an incredible friend. I have a back problem, you can notice I'm leaning, and I think it was about 11 years ago in Mohawk Golf Course, I practically fell down, I couldn't walk, and he had to carry me off the golf course, which in normal circumstances would end my golf. But he has propped me up and stayed with me ever since. I can swing a golf club, but he does all the little extra things that you wouldn't think of, and he does it so selflessly, it's almost embarrassing how nice he is to me with all of that. We play golf all summer, and all winter, we go to a former student mine's diner, Matty's, and once a week for breakfast, and he thought that that's the first time he's going to see me this week. I told him I was going to see you tom, see you on Thursday, and it's the only time I've ever lied to him. It's just, like before Christmas, he, Barbara and Jeff took my wife and I out for dinner, we went for dinner at Bottoms Up, and he just did an extra little thing. I hadn't been through the city, because we live on the edge of town, and I don't just drive through town for the fun of it, I just don't, didn't think of it. Jeff decided to do a special thing, and he drove us through with the beautiful lights that were in the city at Christmas, and it was a fantastic experience. My wife still talks about it, she mentioned it today. So I could give a million examples of how, what a good friend he is. I will just say that he is about the best friend anybody could possibly have. I really appreciate it. And there's a song, I think it goes something like, "Thank You For Being My Friend."
Anybody who knows, anybody who knows Larry realizes he has a first-class mind and a first-class education. I mean, we can have lots of discussions about politics, and he's got the U.S. Constitution in his head, and he's taught the U.S. Constitution to students. So, I mean, it's a pleasure to play golf with Larry, but it's also a pleasure to, you know, talk over things over breakfast, too. So, thank you so much, Larry, and thank you for bringing Barbara.
Would anyone else from the audience like to speak to Mr. Schumard? All right, I'm going to go around the room. Mr. Krogan, would you like to say something?
Sure. Mr. Schumard, we've worked together many years ago with Larry, and then lately here again, and it's been my pleasure to work with you. Your reports are impeccable, and you've been a wonderful person to call our engineer, and your care for the city is astounding. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. It's been a pleasure to working with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Madden?
Jeff, I just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done for us, and when I hear you report about the finer details of our bigger projects, it gives me a sense of comfort. So, I know that we're able to move forward in the right direction when we hear you give somebody a thumbs up. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate everything you do for the city. It's the run-for-downtown project and your beautification efforts, and it's been a real, you're a real treasure to the city, I feel.
Mr. Numcheck?
Well, I have a special thank you, of course, working with Larry on the Planning Board for over 18 years that I've been here, and especially with Jeff. He's always been professional, always been on, he knows exactly what he's talking about, especially about the SWFs and the EAFs and all that information that we need to make our decisions, and I couldn't make any of the decisions and know what I know if it wasn't for him to learn as much as I have. And Jeff, thank you so much. Enjoy your retirement, and welcome to the club.
Thank you, John. Enjoy your retirement. Well deserved, and I hope you have as much fun with traveling and everything as we have.
Mr. Martinez?
We haven't known each other for a very long time, but it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Atkins, would you like to say something?
Haven't really had a chance to work with you, all I'd like to say is enjoy your retirement, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Britto?
Your expertise has been really comforting and clarifying in so many of these details, and it's helped me really understand a lot of the finer details. I appreciate it, and best of luck.
Ms. Witt?
Well, I'm fairly new to the Planning Board, so we haven't really worked together, but I, as Mr. Britto just said, you know, reading your reports, you get to know a full knowledge of what we really need to, and we feel confident in what we need to go forward. So, thank you for your service to the city, and best of luck to you.
You've been here since I was here, my first appointment in 2006, and you were welcoming then, and everybody has talked about your incredible dedication to the city and your excellent work. You have my full confidence whenever you put out a report, but mostly, I just want to say what a good person you are and a kind-hearted person who always takes the time to walk around the room and greet everyone. I know that you truly love our city, and I know this is probably bittersweet for you as it was when I did my semi-retirement from teaching, but your career's been much longer, and I'm grateful that I get to still see you on Sundays. But I found a quote, I love quotes, that does sum up some of what I think when I think of you, Mr. Schumard, and it's by Frank Lloyd Wright. "I know the price of success, dedication, hard work, and an unremitting devotion to the things you want to see happen," and that couldn't be truer, I know that's so true for you. And thank you for all your service.
Thank you, Nicole. You've been a good friend, and it's been a pleasure, you know, working with you and also seeing you at church.
Mr. Higbee?
Well, I would like to echo what everybody said about your role in Planning Board and your role for the city. Having somebody that has such a love for the city and a love for, you know, the betterment is irreplaceable. You've certainly been a role model for us all. You're selfless, you're giving, caring, and we certainly will miss you. Thank you, thankful that we have a bond in Kiwanis. And I know that your great hobbies will keep you busy. Jeff just wrote a book, which I just picked up on last Wednesday, you know, with birding, he loves to bird, and some of the maps that he's produced of Davich Park that he's given to the Recreation Department. I mean, all the things that he's done for the city, and definitely big shoes to fill for you for whoever comes in on your behalf, but we'll certainly miss you, Jeff.
Thank you, Dan. It's been a pleasure working with you and getting to know you, and appreciating everything you do for the city and for the community and for good friends around you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd just like to say that I really appreciate the sentiment expressed here tonight and the good comments, you know, the sudden appearance of my good friend Larry and my beloved wife. And I would also like to take this opportunity to introduce a fellow who will take, keep, carry on for the Planning Board.
Could I just interrupt you just one second? Can I read what I wrote?
Sorry to jump the gun.
That's okay, and as a gift, we're going to let you go home early tonight, because Mr. Nowak did not show up, who you were originally intended to be here for, and we didn't tell you, we lied to you again. All right? So, but that's your gift, that's your retirement gift. But I'm going to just echo probably what everybody else has just said. Mr. Schumard has served as the engineer in the City of Planning Board for 20-plus years. I've had the pleasure of serving 14 years with Mr. Schumard. Mr. Schumard has served the City of Middletown Planning Board, not only as its engineer, which he is very proficient at, but he's also a concerned resident of the City of Middletown. As an engineer, he has always worked expeditiously and concisely to move projects forward. As a longtime resident of Middletown, he is aware of its unique and sometimes difficult characteristics. This combination has provided the Planning Board with valuable insights and information to assess and approve projects. That being said, I would like to take this time to thank Mr. Schumard for his years of service to the City of Middletown Planning Board. I wish him well, good health, and the best of whatever he plans to do, and thank you for being you.
Thank you, Tony, Mr. Chairman.
Now, would you like to introduce?
You've been a good, a good member, a good chairman. The city is in good hands with you guys.
Thank you.
And it's been, been a pleasure.
It has.
Knowing you and hope to continue our friendship. I do have an interest in the City of Middletown, I always have, and my, you know, my best interests are the best interests of the city. And in that regard, I want to introduce John Zarowski from Clark Patterson. John is a licensed PE. The more I talk with John and the more I know him, the more I feel that you were in good hands with John. He has Planning Board experience, and he has experience with all types of civil engineering projects, and we will be working together to transition, and I think you will be well-served, and I feel very good and very comfortable that that will be the case.
Thank you. Good to meet you. And like I said, Mr. Schumard, you can go home early tonight. We do have a card for you, just as a memento, that's all. The Planning Board's signed everything. Just so you don't forget our names. Sir, an absolute pleasure.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, everybody.
Good luck, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back onto the regular agenda. Just so our transcriptionist knows, all board members are present. Mr. Welch is absent this evening, in his place, Mr. Martinez is here. Moving forward with the agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes of January the 5th, 2022, Planning Board minutes. Mr. Britto, motion, second by Ms. Witt. Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Hewson?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda, Heritage Restoration Properties LLC, 14 to 22 Cottage Street.
Hello, everyone. Can I take my mask off within this box?
Yes, you can, yes.
I'm sorry, I have two broken ribs, so if I seem like I'm a little off-kilter, that's why. Everyone, thank you very much for seeing us this evening. We will be requesting that we can expand inside of our premise. It has been brought to my attention by council that what we submitted originally when we came to the Board in 2013 and 2014 was supposed to be renewed. I did not realize that, so we're here tonight to renew it, update it, get it done, whatever you guys need. Essentially, we're looking at expanding upon our brewery, which is Clemson Brothers Brewery. We're looking to expand within our current footprint, and yeah, so whatever you guys need to address with us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Porter. Ms. Two, we have the mailings. Any written comments? Oh, excuse me, I opened the public hearing, any written comments? Anything, anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll move to the board. Anyone has any questions, comments, or concerns? Mr. Madden?
Can you just give us a little explanation as to the entrance to the taproom extension? Like, how are people going in there, so forth?
Sure. So, if we look at the plan, and I just want to make sure we're all looking at the same thing. We have seating up front, and then we have bathrooms in the rear. Are we all looking at that?
Are you looking at the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet?
Yep, very good, yep. Okay, so, on this floor plan, we are, we are in the top right quadrant. That is going to be the egress, to answer your question, and that is on, so we have Cottage Street, that's Cottage Street, I believe. Yes, that's Cottage Street. So, that's your, that's your entrance there, and then we also have, if you're familiar with the property, a corridor to the right of this, which you're seeing as concrete, it shows a corridor of concrete, and then at the bottom of that, there is a entrance and exit that goes into that space. Just for clarification, the property that we're talking about is the old Clemson Building, and there are two buildings. There are two buildings on that property. One we call the tower building, which is to the right of where you see concrete going down the alley, and then the second building is the warehouse building, which is to the left of where you see concrete going down the alley. So what we're proposing here is in the warehouse building, and you're going to have two points of entry and exit. So, there will be an exit out onto Cottage Street, and then two of them going into the concrete pathway, if you will. Will that gate at the end of the pathway onto Cottage Street be open? So, I believe that the board is aware, and if it's not aware, we have another business that's inside of that property, which is called QB Ball. Part of the Planning Board approval was to make that gate accessible with an exit bar that is in and out for emergency purposes. So that gate will still be there unless we're told that it's no longer allowed to be there. But yes, that gate will be there, but it has all of the emergency stuff on it that Adam McCary had told us that we needed. The alley is not going to be used, for clarification, other than for emergency purposes, but you'll have an in and an out, not only from our beer garden, but also from Cottage Street.
Those access points will also be double-checked by DPW and the Middletown Fire Department. If there's any confusion at the moment by looking at the plan, obviously, they will adjust upon their inspection. Pardon me? Yes. It's, it's the building to the, it says storage, see the crosshatch building?
Yeah.
That's, I believe, because he just says a concrete alleyway. I'm sorry, a concrete alleyway, Mr. Higbee? Okay.
Mr. Atkins, did you have a chance to go there?
Sorry, yes, we, we went there prior and looked at a couple of things. I'm very familiar with the property, fully sprinkled. I know they're going to update the fire alarms in the new building and all that stuff, and we'll probably have to get an as-built plan for the sprinklers, just to verify coverage. I did have a question, the garage that you have in the northwest corner, I show, you show egress coming out, is that going into that garage? Is that still going to be used as a garage, storage space? How are you? I mean, I know you don't use it as a repair garage, I know it's just a car gets parked there once in a while. So how is that going to be utilized?
Yes, so, for clarification, we're just, we're talking, if we again go to the floor plan that we're all looking at, you're talking about the upper left-hand quadrant, there's a door there?
Correct.
Okay, so, that door is not there, and that can be updated easily. You will not be able to get into that area. It'll all be closed off to that area. That, yes, so you won't be able to, that, we call that the corridor to go down for the forklifts and stuff?
Correct.
That's completely closed off from this area, and right now, we're only proposing this area. We will come back in front of the Planning Board, I'm sure, in the next five, three to five years, to get the remainder of the warehouse built out for similar use, but right now, this is what we're proposing. So, everything else will be closed off, firewalls, everything will be done according to what I understand the city needs, based on what we've done already.
Okay, so just so I'm clear in my head, you're going to put a wall up, so the loading dock area where the tractor, where the trailers are backed into, there's going to be a corridor that entire run of that, that section there, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
And, and Adam specifically, McCary, the old fire inspector, which has retired, has gone over it repeatedly with me, with what we need to do, so we'll do what we need to do.
That's fine, we'll talk in the permitting process.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Madden, anything else?
No.
Any other board member? I'm sorry.
This is just going to be a tasting room? You're going to have a bar in there, too, or is it just for beer tasting?
So, we are going to have patrons go into that area for tasting, and then any overflow that we have during summer months. We know in this industry, the winter brings us down, but during the summer, sometimes it can get busy, and because of all the tourism that Orange County has been able to bring in, including everybody here, sometimes it gets very busy, so we need to have excess space, and that's why we're doing this.
We're going to have to waive parking, Mr. Chairman, on this?
Yes.
Yes.
It's going to be typical of the DMU zone? The other thing, just so that the board is aware of, this tasting room, taproom, Mr. Porter also, in his application, has put some type of assembly occupancy, event space. So that'll be determined, your occupancy will be determined by the Middletown Fire Department, of course.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Your hours going to be the same?
Everything is the same.
It's all the same.
I doubt this will ever be in space that's openly.
Right. In the, in the resolution, Mr. Porter, we'll also mention, because you are in the DMU zone, the hours of operation are controlled by the DMU zone, just briefly and roughly. They're basically, there's really no opening time, but they are till midnight, Sunday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, 2:00 a.m. And that's, when I read off the resolution, that's typical of the DMU zone, that is the hours of operation. Can't go any later than 2:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday, you can't go any later than midnight, Sunday through Thursday.
So, Mr., am I pronouncing it correctly, Copazella?
Capazella, close enough.
Copazella.
Sure.
I have three daughters at home, and my managers all have children, and when I opened this business initially?
Yeah.
I told them, if you have to call me after 12 o'clock?
You're fired.
Basically.
That's good. I just wanted to add that, because some people don't, do not realize that it actually exists in the zone, okay? Just make it clear, no surprises.
And if you guys ever have an issue with it, you can call me directly, and I will address it.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Two, nothing further on the telephone?
You have to go to the public, too.
I am.
Oh, okay.
Anyone online, Ms. Hanson?
Not at this time.
Anyone present wishing to speak on this application? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, going to try to put this into a resolution. 22 Cottage Street, Middletown, New York, Heritage Restoration Properties LLC. Expansion of existing brewery. I'm not quite sure how we're going to put this request. It's just it's a connection of the existing brewery and restaurant operations, and it'll be to support a beer tasting room, interior bout, beer lounge, and changing storage occupancy to assembly occupancy. Okay, and you're going to be subject to the City of Middletown DPW, City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval. and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown and the State of New York, if applicable. In addition, throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables. The applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas, this application is located in the DMU zone, applicants must submit and receive approval from Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection, Section 407-3, Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the common council from this date forward. You'll also be subject to Architectural Review Board, if you have to do any outside work, facade work. And of course, we'll waive parking also.
And the hours of operation.
Any hours of operation will be governed by the DMU zone. Also, so we've added this to our applications because this seems to have been forgotten by a lot of applicants. Whereas, pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 6, Administration and Enforcement, Chapter 475-53, Paragraph E6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of granting a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. In other words, if you don't do any work in the next six months, you need to send us a letter or let us know that you're going to extend, for whatever reason, so that we can extend your approval. If you don't, you kind of lose your approval. Okay?
Did you waive parking in that?
I did.
It wasn't?
Yes. Did I forget anything else? Okay. On the resolution, need a motion? Ms., Ms. Houston, I need a second. Mr. Numcheck, discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston? Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Get with the DPW and the Middletown Fire Department. Just for our transcriptionist.
Thank you to everybody this evening, and we'll make sure that we continue to do a good job. I just would like to say that my heart was struck earlier. My father told me that I can count on one hand all of the friends that I have in life on my deathbed. So for somebody to speak earlier about a friend, and I believe in the City of Middletown, I have, and I continue to do, spectacular, spectacular. So for what it's worth.
Thank you. Just for the record and for our transcriptionist to add to the minutes, that I just have to point out that all first-time applicant appearances are considered a preliminary hearing, and then the planning board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications this evening. Just paperwork. Next on the agenda, Eric Inc., 27 West Main Street, Eating and Drinking Establishment. Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name for the record and your intentions, please.
Eric Mishayev, to open a restaurant, same use, right across the street here. Used to be called Nina's Restaurant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, Ms. Two, we have the mailings? Thank you. In that case, we're going to open the public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Two, do we have anything in writing? Anybody on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, anyone on, on, online?
Not at this time.
Okay, then we'll move on to the board. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board? Mr. Numcheck, sure, you can make that comment.
I noticed in the plan, you did not put anything about your outdoor seating area. Are you not intending to use that?
We are planning to use that, and I asked the landlord for, you know, the latest site plans, and this is what he supplied me with. Not sure if he included the backspace, but there is a backspace there, and I don't see it in the site plan.
Yeah, no.
But we want to use the site plan, and we want to use the outside space, just like the prior restaurant did. A little bit about myself, if you guys like a little background on me, I can give that to you as well.
You're not changing anything of?
No, we're not, we're not going to do any construction. We're going to keep everything the same, just basically new FFNE renovate, you know, redecorate.
As far as the outdoor area, Mr. Numcheck states, even though it's not on the site plan, it's under the city's privy to, to give them a permit. You have to go for a separate permit, even though we, we say it's okay. You have to go for a separate permit for that dining anyway.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board?
What kind of restaurant are you opening?
We are looking to open an American restaurant with a jazz theme, catering to an older clientele. I myself am 44 years old. I went to Goshen High School, I went to Middletown Junior High School. I don't know if you guys know my father Boris, sitting back there, but he's been in business here in Middletown for 37 years. He owns a furniture store on Route 211 East. You guys may have bought a mattress or something from him at one point. Life brings me full circle, to be quite honest with you. I was planning to do something like this in Tampa, where I used to co-own a place. And then COVID hit, and my plans there, you know, went down. But then my sister passed away, may she rest in peace, last year. And so life brought me back here to Orange County, and then I said, you know, I could oversee my father's furniture store, help him, and also do what I want to do while I'm here, so.
Yes, Mr. Madden?
Your space is going to include what was the ballroom as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, exactly, everything, the last restaurant, exact square footage.
Two separate bars, yeah, one right off of West Main and the one in the rear.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And just in case someone got two plans, you'll see a second floor and a third floor. They are not coming here for that this evening. They are only here for the first-floor restaurant.
Correct. And I have over 25 years' experience in the hospitality industry. I used to co-own a place in Tampa, Florida. I've been, you know, doing 20, 20, 25 years now in this industry. So it's not like I'm just doing this without any idea what I'm doing. I used to co-own a place in Tampa, and I have a couple of other LOIs out in some different cities. So this is going to be our first location.
Mr. Atkins, did you have a chance to look?
And I'm, and by the way, I'm, it's called Jazz Bar Cafe, but we're going to be putting my sister's name on there, Julie's, in her memory.
I have not had a chance to do a site visit, but if it remains existing, there's a couple of issues that I have outside of planning board that I'll discuss with him.
And I, and I walked the space, and looks, looks like it's in pretty good condition to me.
The hours of op, well, yeah, we, we had a, a, a kind of a prelim with this applicant, and we, we described the hours of operation to the DM, DMU zone, and that's exactly what he has on his application, so. Yep, that's, and also.
And we may not even stay open that late, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. We might not even stay open that late, so.
And, and, and open seven days a week for lunch and dinner. The applicant originally had a shorter time span, but we told him, like we do with everybody else, that, you know, go for the, the whole thing. This way, you don't have to come back. You can do whatever you want, less hours, less days, it's fine.
Thank you.
We'll have to waive the park, parking.
Yes.
And you're going to be having a full liquor license?
Yes.
Yes, you have to put into the SLA to that, for that?
Yes, and I've already talked to the state of New York about the license and the process and the time it takes. There's a temporary one that comes in, and then the official one comes in six to nine months after that.
Just as a, that you know, make sure that you know, they know that you're going to be doing outside, too.
Absolutely.
Something separate.
You got it.
All right, we'll go back to the public hearing. Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
Anyone else here who would like to step forward and comment on this application? I'm going to close the public hearing. Move back to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. Okay. On the resolution for 27 West Main Street, Eating and Drinking Establishment. Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown and the State of New York, if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. This being in the DMU zone, we will waive parking. You will need to go to the Architectural Review Board for any signage, any facade work, or exterior work, okay, to get approval. Also, whereas you're in the DMU zone, this application is located in the zone, applicants must submit and receive approval from the Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection, Chapter 407-3, Collection, and apply with this section and any other sections enacted by the common council from this date forward. Also, your hours of operation will be, as you stated, but that's also as per the DMU zone allows. Also, whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 6, Administration and Enforcement, Chapter 475-53, Paragraph E6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of the special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. So in six months from now, if you have problems with your funding, construction, whatever it takes, please send us a letter for, with reasoning and asking permission to extend the application.
You got it.
Approval, okay?
By the way, if I may say one thing, the landlord just emailed me the site plan that has the backyard. So if I could email that, I can to anybody that wants that, that has the backspace.
You can submit it.
Okay.
You can add it to the application.
Okay.
That's fine by us, we know it exists, but that's fine. For the record, that'd be great.
You got it.
Need a motion? Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. Madden? Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. See to DPW and the Middletown Fire Department.
Thank you so much, God bless you all, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Anthony, did you mention ARB in that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I got them all written down now, I try not to forget them. No, that's okay. Okay. Should we charge him for that, or what?
Advertisement?
Advertising, advertising fee? Okay, next up on the agenda is Derek Moran, 39 to 47 Railroad Avenue, office and retail space.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for seeing me. My name's Derek Moran. Intentions are to open up a retail space, selling fireplaces, grills, patio furniture, right there on Railroad Ave.
Okay, Ms. Two, we have the mailings? Thank you. In that case, we're going to open the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to step forward, comment on this application? Ms. Two, we have anything in writing? Anything on, anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
All right, we're going to move to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Mr. Atkins, any concerns?
I was able to do a site visit a while back. It's pretty straightforward, it's a fully sprinkled building. I did have a question, the, for the showroom area, where is the entrance and exit? Is that the, the wooden staircase on the side, on Cottage Street side?
So the main entrance is going to be right there on Railroad Ave. The front door is right next to Exotics, kind of right off to the,
Okay.
It's 10 feet off to the, the right.
Okay.
That's going to be the main entrance into the showroom. We are also going to have that back area to kind of mingle around with outdoor furniture-type stuff.
Okay.
So there's an exit back there as well. And there's two parts to that, there we have the site for Suite D and Suite E. There's going to be a door between the offices and the showroom. So there's going to be an entrance into there as well for some of the contractors that we have to come visit.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Will the offices be used by your outdoor furniture business, or will they be like a separate tenant?
No, that, that's going to be used by us.
Part of yours, okay.
Just a little backstory, we did start initially as an e-commerce business. We've been visiting now for about six years. We have a full staff, we have customer service, myself and my partner. That's kind of where we're primarily going to be running our e-commerce business. We have contractors, construction companies that come in and visit. We have the space for them to go in there, and then we have the showroom on the other side. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Anyone from the board one more time? All right, I'll put this one in now. Um, get on here. Do you have, uh,
Hours?
Specific hours of operation?
Yes, we're going to be doing, so right now, where it's been hard finding people to work, but hours of operation, we're going to try and do seven days a week, nine to seven. Probably going to have winter hours, something closed a little bit earlier, but typically nine to seven.
Nine to seven daily.
Seven days.
Mr. Higbee?
No, I just was confirming.
Okay.
This is a waive parking as well?
Yes. Yes, it, this is in the DMU zone. So we're going to waive parking, architectural review, the whole nine, y'all have to read the whole thing off here.
No, you don't.
All right. Resolution concerning 39 to 47 Railroad Avenue, office and retail space, specifically a fireplace showroom at the moment. Hours of operation will be 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown and the State of New York, if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas the application is located in the DMU zone, applicants must submit and receive approval from Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 2, Collection, Section 407-3, Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the common council from this date forward. Also, since you're located in the DMU zone, you need to go to the Architectural Review Board if you're doing any exterior signage or facade work on the building. We will waive parking. And whereas, again, pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 6, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of granting of this special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void.
Hours of operation.
I gave it to him already, nine to, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. Yep. All right, I need a motion. Ms. Witt? I need a second. Mr. Higbee? Discussion? Yes, Mr. Numcheck?
On the second page, it has here, we will have a few live burns. Is that what that says?
Yes, so, so basically, it's a, you know, a display piece. So they'll have a couple of fireplaces. And we've already talked about some of the codes and some, a live burn. It sounds like, it'll be a live fireplace, some of it, there'll be a wall with electric units on it. And then along the back wall, it's a single-story building. We'll have the venting going at the back, we'll have some pellet stoves, some wood stoves, of that nature.
And that'll be overseen by the Middletown Fire Department. All right, so I think we were at, we had a motion, I had a second, we had a discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Numcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you so much.
DPW and the Fire Department.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You, too. Good luck. Okay. Last on the agenda. I'm going to murder this name. Let's see. Wally Alra Hani, 207 Dulson Avenue, deli slash grill shop. I don't see him present.
I have him online.
Ms. Hanson, is he online?
Yes, that's correct. He just need, he's self-muted. He just needs to unmute himself, and he'll be able to address the board.
Okay. Ready with your bar?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, hi, everyone.
How you doing?
My name is Wally Alrohani. You were close, very good. I think, one of, very good, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Speaking about retirement, I'm sorry I couldn't make it now. I'm in the great state of Florida, and let me tell you something, guys. It is nice and warm here. So for anybody, so for any retirees, this is the place to be. A little bit about myself, I grew up in Brooklyn, New York. I worked in a family deli business, a New York-style deli business, and I moved here for family reasons about three years ago. And one thing that I noticed, especially in Middletown, there's a lot of fast food places to eat, but there is not a good spot to have a nice New York sandwich. So our proposal is to have a nice deli with grill, no alcohol, and drinks and snacks. There's going to be, like a bar seating in the window, right facing Dulson Avenue. And, and yeah, whatever you guys requesting, or whatever you need to make this happen, I'm all ears.
All right. One of the first questions I have to ask, Ms. Two, do we have his mailings? We do not? Okay. Mr. Alra Hani, we do not have any proof of mailings that you've contacted your neighbors. Do you have that?
I'm sorry. I was speaking to Martina. She did mention, like, stuff of mailing. I didn't understand what was requested exactly. I thought it was like a mail to prove, a proof of address. But I, whatever it is, I could take care of that. But no, I, I did not do that.
Okay. Just so you know, we can't proceed.
Preliminary.
Pardon me?
Changes it to a preliminary.
We, we've already advertised it. Can we open the public hearing or not?
Not without the mailings.
Okay. Sir, what's happened is, without the mailings, we cannot proceed. That means we can't open the public hearing, and we just cannot move forward. You must complete the mailings and then come back next month, and then we can continue your process.
Yes. Is there any, like, info of, like, how, like, how's the mailings and how, how do, like, the process of it? Because I haven't, this is my first time.
Okay.
Like, in New York City, like, you know, usually, like, you know, if you want to open, like, a shop, you could just, you know, sign a lease and open it up. So this is my, like, a new experience for me. So I'm sorry if I need any misunderstanding.
That's okay. I would just give Martina Two a call, and she'll be more than happy to explain the mailing.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you for having me.
Okay. No problem. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Ms. Hanson, is he offline?
Yes.
Yeah, he, he didn't hear a word. He, no way. That's not happening. He's going to have to call you, and you're going to have to walk him through it somehow. I know you did. I know. You, you did exactly what you were supposed to do. And he, he just didn't, he, he should have asked the question. He should have followed up. He didn't. It's just the way it was. So, next time around. Next on the agenda, which the gentleman has not shown up, he was not ready, was Nowak Five LLC. So that concludes our agenda for this evening. I need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Numcheck, Ms. Witt, Mr. Madden?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Numcheck? Mr. Britto?
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Higbee?
Yeah.
And I vote yes.